Before we get to the listening session, I kind of wanted to explain what we're doing with this input. We're going to hear from you all. And the next steps after this is we will, staff will take all the input we receive. Some of it has come independently from folks in the next meeting. We're going to distill it into a document, a list of initiatives, topics. And we're going to return to the city council at a future date to be determined at a regular meeting. And at that meeting, it's our aim to prioritize and assign the topics that come out of this meeting. So you will be able to see, and we'll let you all know when that is scheduled and make sure that everyone's aware. You'll be able to track the input we made today through the process and see it manifest into concrete things. So, we, lastly, I want to mention that we're in the process of updating economic development strategy for overall plan track out of the city. The Economic Development Advisory Committee has been working on this for about a year. Established itself committee for that purpose. And the Economic Development Advisory Committee, for anyone here who's interested in these kinds of topics, meets every other month on the odd number of months, the third Wednesdays at 11:30 at City Hall. And by attending those meetings, they're open to the public, you can provide input through that venue as well and help guide the economic development strategy. With that, we want to hear what you want. And before we do that, I want to give away, we're going to give away some stuff. So if any could grab their own mic.
Thank you for attending. And as I said, those of you who brought business cards and dropped them off, we have a couple items to give away. One is this, smart thinking. We have this lovely, this basket of cookies and other goodies from Mary's Men's. And also that big, beautiful bouquet of flowers back there is one of the items we're giving away somewhere. If you don't mind, you can add your name. And so what's up with you like the cookies or the flowers? Okay.
Lots of Thai cuisine, Karen Jerome.
Thank you. So, listening session time. We're going to roll around with the mic, the freehand mic. And actually, I have a couple of them. And we want to hear a couple of things. We want to hear challenges that you all face when you're doing business. We also want to hear solutions to those challenges. And this is, imagine this is an unconstrained environment. This is blue sky, you know what I mean? Whatever, even if it's a crazy idea, or actually especially if it's a crazy idea, we'd like to hear. We want to hear how we can address challenges that you all face. We're going to be taking them all down on paper. And we'll go as long as we have time and as long as folks want to talk. So with that, I'm going to go get the mic. We'll start taking some input. Yes, and if you would state your name, it's helpful to know which business you're from as well. Before you start your comments. We'd ask too that you keep, comments as succinct as you can. Don't, you know, try not to repeat things that were said by folks prior to you other than say, "Yeah, I agree with that," so and so. Again, this is meant to be listening. So that will open the floor. Who would like to go first?
Hi, my name is Kari Saqibani. I live and work in Emeryville. I'm the owner of Emeryville Chiropractic. And I just want to thank all of you that had set up this plan. I've been working in Emeryville for 17 years. And I have been looking forward to meet my neighbors, whether they live here or they work here. And I'm very glad to lose that I was able to agree. And I want to thank all of you that made this happen. And it's really nice to see you all at the same time under the same roof. Because when you come to the planning commissioners meeting, you mean the city council meeting, or vice versa. So I want to thank all of you. It's wonderful and it's a dream come true for me after 17 years. With that said, the area that I work is close to Antarx Station. And one of the comments that I have is, it's wonderful to see these developments happen, but it would be better to put a little bit more thought into it in terms of parking. Because of the nature of my job, it's hard for me to tell my five and a half months pregnant woman to walk four blocks to come and see me. And people that have migraine headaches and about to toss their cookies, I can't tell them to simply wait for another four to five minutes to come and see me. So it was an arduous process that I was able to be persistent to come up with some solution with my landlord. But it would be really nice for the planning commissioners meeting, as well as the city council, to tell these developers, if you want to develop something here and you have hundreds of workers on site, please do not park on public properties. These are for us, not for you rich people. You have garages, use your own garages. Or allocate aside or rent the space from the city and put all your workers on that site. I go to work out in the morning. And by 6:00 AM, the entire city, Second, 59th Street, entire Powell Street ramp underneath them. It's already, they're all parked. And they're there from 6:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And after six months of fighting and fighting and fighting, in order to shut me up, they finally brought me a solution. So I would really appreciate if the future endeavors, please tell these developers to have their own designated parking space. It's not fair for my patients to pay $7 an hour where they're only in my office for 15 to 20 minutes to pay for a proper parking. And I have been working on it too.
Always come back. So contractor parking in particular for the projects. Make sure that there is available parking for patrons, employees.
My name is Ruzmana. I represent the Duzuraman on 62th Street. And I'm also a member of Economic Development Advisory Committee, thanks to Chad. It was very nice to listen to you. You said you are in Emeryville like for 17 years. We are like about eight months. So I have a very fresh experience, which I really would like to share with you guys and John. And, sorry, a little bit nervous. I think as a new business, we really face certain problems, which I was extremely lucky to resolve just because I met Chad. And I really would love to thank you for all the support and help you provide to us. Basically, because I was a person who really opened the full business in Emeryville. So like from step one to like still down. So I really kind of know on my own skin how it was. And I think what I feel is really necessary to have a person in the city, maybe kind of contact person, where we can go and get all the details we need as a business to start a business in Emeryville. Or even now, when I have some ongoing problems. It was really hard. I mean, I have to use my personal, because I was personally meet with Chad and I could send him email and ask, what is the best way to do, this way or this way? I was lucky. But I'm pretty much sure there is a lot of people who just starting business here and they don't have that access directly to Chad, as a example, right? So I really feel a big necessity to have a certain, I don't know, you can call it whatever you want, like that or whatever you want, but it should be some kind of group or person who we as a business know that we can go and ask any type of questions. Especially this legal issues, licensing, it's really all type of questions. Even the sign, I mean, you know, this temporary sign, $500. So it's really a lot of, a lot of stuff we have to find out. And that's what I really would like to say, that I feel that we really need this person. Because we have certain problems, like even, you know, a tree on our property died and we want to plant another tree. And it was a big headache to find out if you can plant a tree or no. We cannot plant a tree because we have to plant sort of special heighted trees. So, I mean, you know, it really takes a lot of our time, which we can, you know, use for developing our business, improve the life of the community here. We have a lot of people coming to our restaurant. And we really want to put our effort to provide service and do our business, not thinking about this tree planting, you know. Thanks.
Thank you. So that's false anonymous liaison ambassador type program. I saw your hand up earlier.
Because I'm not very good at remembering, I actually wrote mine down. Thank you for hosting this event. Also, especially to John for initiating. So first of all, my background, I've owned and operated business in Emeryville since 2005. So next year will be our 13th year. I co-owned up with my partner Robert Surenrough where East Bank Pilates. We used to be in the vestal building behind City Hall and we moved when Park was renovated to 5022 Park Plaza. When we initially opened the business and we chose Emeryville because it had a vibrant and active business community. Among those business leaders, some of you may know, were Peter Lonnen, Peter Lonnen, as we speak Dutch, founder of Digital Arts College, Tom Fanyo, CEO of Sammy Brady's, Albert from Rudy's Cafe. They were all very strong Chamber of Commerce. Since it's shutting down in the chamber, well, it's for several years leading up to that, the positive and supportive climate has been on what I've called a steep decline. It hit an ultimate low point during the period of the MWO and Fair Work Week, where many businesses felt there was a lack of communication, but also an unwillingness to work with businesses to find solutions that would be beneficial to the realities of owning and operating a business in our small town. Here's the first reality. So fixed costs exponentially, those of you, business owners, this is nothing new, right? Our rent goes up, our healthcare goes up, our cost of goods, cost of labor, cost of living. I initially, I have two employees that now can no longer afford to come to Emeryville because of the drive and the commute, all those things combined. However, there's not a rise exponentially in customers or customers willing to pay more for services. And I think that's something that neither the council or the planning commission have recognized. So over the past 12 years of running a business in this area, here are the issues that I think are vital to economic growth of small business, as well as a general enhancement of both resident and business life in Emeryville. Well, I think there should be a position on the city council of one representative from the small business community. Small business needs a consistent representative. That is, if the city really wants to support small business. The city should get behind the support of a single payer healthcare option to decrease the cost of healthcare for small business owners. I think small businesses need the backing of a citywide PR and marketing strategy. You mentioned Chad, buy local shop logo. I've never seen anything about that in Emeryville, except when Little City Emeryville has tried to kick off, struggled getting money and those kind of things. The city should work with regional and local players to assist business in capital loans and other financial opportunities to help grow their business. If that's what you guys are doing, more comment to you. I think more businesses need to know about it, need to have a personal rep in order to get information. I think the city should also work with little organizations like Little City Emeryville, who have tried on their own to get going, to promote small business and help each other. I think small business and medium sized business, as you pointed out, what's quarter of the revenue, it's a major bulk of revenue for the city. So it should be rewarded, enhanced, and cultivated through policies and incentives and not just one-off reasons or base salary. I also think that there should be a moratorium on policies that are really negatively impacting businesses. I know in our area, we've lost several businesses. I think those of you who are in food service, restaurant business, more of that up to you is a rough time for you guys. It's also a rough time for everybody else. Because at the end of the day, what impacts one business impacts all of us. So if other businesses are struggling, we're also going to struggle. Sorry to take too much time.
A walk by, Hannah, that was up to go back.
Hi, I'm Louise Engel, State Management Services. And I actually have a license in Emeryville for over 20 years. And you might recognize my name, I campaigned last fall. It was actually a great experience. A suggestion on the solution side to actually build upon what was just expressed regarding the city helping promote small business. We have the Emery Go Round. And I know that it promotes the arts by having both poems and art and such that are advertised. How about having twice monthly rotating business, let's say highlights at noon time? They're going, let's say, going to various food places or cafes. That would get our business people out exploring different parts of the city. Or we also have a number of coffee roasting companies or companies that, as part of their cafe, provide specialty coffee services. And there are a number of those spaced throughout the city that might be another theme. I'm sure that our Economic Development Commission can tackle it with other themes. But this, we have the Emery Go Round. It provides great shuttle service to each of us, both the commute time, but also midday. And getting those people during the week out to our businesses on some sort of themed basis, I think would be a really good, helpful service to small business.
Rob Arias, evili.com. I want to give a plug for the Bring Back the Saad program. My buddy Jones Verstie just had to leave. He owns Scarlet City, he said that would be something beneficial to him. So plug for bringing back the Saad program so it could help his business. I'm also part of a city in Emeryville along with Chris. We came up with a list of about eight or 10 recommendations, you know, that we brainstormed from talking to other small businesses. And I think Susannah is going to provide those to you. So, okay, good, good. So I'm not going to rehash those. I've been a small business advocate like since day one. I mean, going back to Cafe Aquarius, if you remember that. And that really ignited the fire underneath me when I realized that nobody had their back, you know? And I did my best to fight for them. I created petitions and, you know, despite all this effort that I put into it, they went under, you know? The city, you know, couldn't do anything. So I decided to kind of carry on torch trying to fight for small businesses. So during the minimum wage ordinance, you know, clearly I felt like small businesses got the shout out there. What I would like to see personally, and something that would be beneficial to me, when Oakland ran out their small business initiative, Measure FF, they did a little bit of awareness campaign. Now, Sal was there, along with Chris Hilliard from this cafe. And I think it was called Fair Wages Taste Better or something like that. And I don't think there was any follow up to that, but they at least tried to educate the consumer that, hey, your prices are going to go up a little bit, you know? But this is the cost of paying a fair wage. So there's some in denial that this is having any impact at all on the cost of food. I mean, I don't see how you can honestly, you know, not realize that. I mean, I go to Rudy's Can't Fail. It used to cost me $30 for me and my wife to get breakfast there. It's $45 now. I can't afford that anymore. I'm a middle class guy. A BLT, you know, a coffee at Scarlet City is, you know, almost $5. So, you know, costs have gone up more than the 5% that our council has unfortunately kind of slipped into the rug. You know, I think they refer to the Berkeley IRL E study, which said it was only about 5%. That's just not realistic, I'm sorry. So we need an awareness campaign. I'm tired of taking it on the chin for our council, you know, saying, trying to provide a realistic perspective that what the minimum wage is doing. If you're proud of this, I know you are, please educate the consumer out there and tell them that this is the cost of paying a fair wage. Just be honest.
Thank you, so. So we're trying to recap a customer facing campaign that helps communicate the minimum wage ordinance, its effect. Is that, did I get that in a single bullet point?
An awareness campaign, go like, one more thing?
Yeah.
And the next time we do the one-year study with Mills, I would hope that they address the talking points of the minimum wage a little bit better, like how much the prices go up? Do people lay off people in order to, you know, balance their books? There was just a lot of talking points that did not get addressed. Or more people living in our city and working in our city, which was a big talking point, I think of the minimum wage as well. So those are things we need to address in the study. And they were not addressed, it was a flawed study.
So focus futures review of the minimum wage on more specific topics, I think is what I think.
Hi, my name is Mauro Rivera. I'm a partner over at Black Bear Diner in Emeryville. And we're up to what Rock was mentioning right now. Just this past month, Harvard University came out with a study on how the minimum wage, and the study was concentrated here in the Bay Area. I didn't send a copy of Chad, I'm sure he had a chance to pass on some of the other members of the city, but how those costs are really affecting us. And the city councils and their desire to do well, which we all understand, last year, last few years passed these minimum wage increases, which we understand were needed and were came from a good spot in the hardest quarters, but really impacted what has done to small businesses. And as you guys in the future go forward with more regulations or increases to the cost of doing business, I hope you will be more attentive to how it's impacting all of us. We are trying to succeed and grow. And we need to succeed, stay open, provide employment for employees. And so, you know, that's one of the things that, that in the last, I've been doing business here for four years now. Overall, it's been pleasant, but the last few years, the costs went up and we had had to increase our costs to keep pace with everything else that's been going up. The cost of, obviously the cost of labor, rent is going to the roof. And I'm not sure what can or can't be done on that front. But I hope you guys, you know, will be more tuned to both what we're facing versus the prior city councils members from last year. Some of them aren't here, but, you know, more really pushing those cost increases on us. And the last point I want to make, does the city of Emeryville provide any low-cost housing for people? You guys do any building? So you guys are, I mean, because that's one thing that I do see that impacting employees. We have, we're having to, our employees are having to travel far away, you know, to be able to come to work. And, you know, I guess I've only been doing business here four years in Emeryville, but I just don't know how extensive the city of Emeryville is providing housing for, for low-cost housing for locals. So I need to be educated on that for all of you. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mauro. Chad, when we're done, we'll make sure we come back to that point. Yes, okay. Yeah, I can actually provide some.
Hi, thanks for mayor, everyone else. My name is Armon, I'm with Evocative Data Centers. We just acquired a data center in Emeryville on 65th Street three months ago. So the question is, does Emeryville or maybe Alameda County have any plans for community choice aggregation program?
Love to talk to you about that. That's my old way, we can revisit, that's another one, maybe it's flag to talk about at the end. Sort of, it looks up today. All right, Mauro?
Hi, my name is Michael Johnson, I'm with Adeline Collective. And I've been working on opening a restaurant in Emeryville, right on the corner of San Pablo and Adeline, where the Martha Parker Street is. And one of the problems that I found was developmental impact. And I was lucky enough to be referred to Chad from the SBA, from Lee Lambert, who told me about Chad, talking about the Saad program. So hopefully that will be something that will come in the past.
Hi there. Thank you for having the noon meeting. It's nice, I work a lot in the evening, so I often don't get to go to things unless it's in the daytime. I own the martial arts studio across the street. And I have a couple of questions really, more than problems that I'm having. One is, is there any attempt or is there a venue that I can go through to get more bike racks put on the main street to help aid with parking and encourage people to bike so they don't have to drive? And the second thing is signage. I don't know if there's any, I know you have a design department that helps people, well, I don't know if they help people, but they charge fees. You have to pay for permits and go through a design review board and all of those things. But on the other side of that, is there anybody that helps? We have a strip of several businesses where I am. And we're looking to get some kind of consistent signage up that meets the city's requirements and helps us have visibility on both sides of San Pablo. And we're constantly getting tagged, at least my sign is. And so we're constantly repainting or trying to, you know, deal with the fact that signage keeps getting vandalized. So if you have any suggestions, I'd appreciate those.
Could you tell us your name?
Oh, Terry, Jill Martino.
Thank you. Yes, we can follow up with it. So when you say signs, I want to make sure I get that correct. For a multi-tenanted building?
Yes.
Okay.
Hi, everyone. I want to thank you for putting on this event, all of you. It's really important and your support and commitment is very important. My name is Sharon Asensio. And I provide accounting services to small businesses and individuals. Been in business for about 35 years. I live and work in Emeryville. And a little, everything that's been said today is so important. But my comment is something a little simpler. And I would like to see us get together and network here. I think that as a small business owner, you're isolated because you're generally working by yourself. Or you have a business, you have your employees, but you don't have other people to talk to about your business, about your issues, about employee problems, about generating new business, about marketing your business. And wouldn't it be nice if we had a group of people here in Emeryville that we could meet with and talk about all these things that pertain to our businesses? And we could provide services to each other? I think that's really critical for small businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. Opportunities for networking.
Hi, my name is Jeffrey Grober. I run the Townhouse Bar in Will. We are in our 20th year of being in business. Last year, we saw a $200,000 increase in our cable due to the MWO. At $200,000 to offset that, we would need to see a $650,000, $700,000 increase in sales to see back to where we were. Now, at $200,000, with the exception of two dishwashers, went to the tipped employees. And the back of the house, used to home make five, six, seven dollars more an hour in minimum wage, are now pissed off because they're only getting two or three. And they lost our money. Give them that money because can't run a restaurant with a 45% labor cost, since there's no way. So we're at this point now that at the end of this year, our 28th year, if we don't have a profit margin that makes it viable for us, we'll leave. Because we can't stay in business here. Besides the $200,000 increase in MWO, we have a 100-year-old building that's $50,000 to sustain that, as you can imagine. And it's just gotten harder and harder. Now, we have a following, and we can go elsewhere. We would like to, we'd like to stay here, but unless there's a tipped employee credit for minimum wage, anything's gonna happen.
All right.
My name is Jacqueline Turner, I have Jacqueline Spa in Emeryville, but I'm right above the Scarlet City Cafe. And I, our street is, there's a side street called Yerga Buena, and that's the side where the garage is, but also the side where people walk their dogs and animals and things like that. People just use that side street to hurry to get to Adeline, and it's really, I've been almost T-boned a couple of times, once just this morning on my way to the bus. But is there a way to get a speed bump or some type of signage out there to say, "Slow down"? Because it's really getting bad over on that side of Yerga Buena Street. Thank you.
Sorry about that for the second time. Just to share the same sentiment from Townhouse, I love your place and in every time. I just want to say that I notion of minimum wage was a great idea, but the fact that Emeryville went ahead and on top of that added to it and bonboarded all of us business owners with posters and posters and threats and threats that if you don't do it, this and that, it's great, but just so you know, for my business, my operating expense went up 55%. And that doesn't go to the person that I'm paying rent to, the developer is plenty wealthy and doesn't have a problem with that, but they basically hand down that expense to us. And for me to all of a sudden be not paying 55% for this year, but tell us from the previous year you have to pay this lump sum of money because that's when it started, is enormous. I really love to work and live in Emeryville, and I have no plans of moving to Fresno. So if anything you guys can do and with your regulations and just kind of like hear our voices before making these decisions would be very much appreciated.
Great, thank you. All right. I don't want to miss any one of the corners.
Hi, everyone, thanks for being here, thanks for putting this on, we appreciate it. My name's Alman, I'm one of the managers and owners at Best Coast Burritos. We're a new restaurant that's been here for only about a year and a half, but my extended family, we've been doing a restaurant here in Emeryville since the late eighties, so we've been here a long time. But we just rebranded and started on the corner of Hollis and Powell. A couple of things, the first thing I wanted to kind of share with you is that I'm thinking about changing our restaurant's name to Best Coast Ballet Service, because just today alone, I had to talk to two customers who came in my restaurant and asked if they could park within the Chevron parking lot. It's not really a parking lot, it's a gas station, there's a couple stalls there, and I'm fortunate to have some of those stalls. But what they tell me is, hey, I can't find any parking around here, and I suggest to them, how about the parking garage at the terrace? It's full. How about down the street? You know, that's full. We have you driven around? Yeah, yeah, yeah. Can I buy a burrito and park here? I'll just be for a few minutes. What they mean is a few hours, or more. So I tell them where to park, I tell them, you know, maybe you can just park on the corner, but try your best, like, please, you know, it's almost lunchtime, you know, I probably need these spots. So again, the parking thing is a real thing, it's real. The other thing too is that I don't know what parking enforcement is in the line of, you know, to-do list for you guys, but I don't think it has teeth, I don't even think the parking enforcement has dentures. You guys really should look into parking enforcement because it can make you guys money. If you guys put up meters, or what the city of Oakland does with the little paper receipts, make money, you guys like making money. Make money on parking enforcement. And that way, the two-hour parking or the one-hour parking, people actually respect it, they will actually move. And so when people visit our town, they feel like they can actually get a parking spot. So I think a lot of businesses will do that. And the other thing too is that sometimes I see, you know, employees and workers of other businesses, they just park on the street. You know, think about something to do with that too, like start an area where the city owns that workers who work in City of Emeryville can, you know, I think they would be gladly happy to pay a monthly fee to know, hey, I can park at that lot every single day, it'll be there for me, and I can walk to where I'm ready to work. So think about that, make some money, you know, enforce the parking, and, you know, people will take everything a lot more seriously and everybody will benefit. That's something that you guys should totally put on the tab, because you guys can make money on it, it would make us happy too. Other thing, because of minimum wage, our expenses went up $125,000 last year, probably go up another same, so you're talking about, if anybody has $1.4 million to lend me in the next year or year and a half, happy to take it. So I'll leave it at that. Thanks, guys.
Okay, thank you. Parking management, for sure.
Hi, everyone, my name is Arman, the co-owner on the 6121 West Road. We just took over on the Bluechase like last year, and we have been opening for like two months, very nice to pick you up. And it's not really my issue, but I'm thinking of right now, Emeryville, it's just like a city that people escape from the freeway. So like, for example, they get out of San Francisco, and they stop by, you know, Holly Street or like San Pablo to go like Berkeley or even like Oakland. But I'm not saying, is there any advertisement for supporting for the small business to be more attractive for, you know, people who are driving on the freeway, driving out of the street so they can see us? So that, you know, people might, you know, visit us and, you know, more entertaining for, you know, every restaurant, every, you know, right? So, sorry, my English is not perfect, but I'm trying to explain like what I have seen so far. Yeah, so it would be some of like sign, you know, before, because I always, I'm living in San Francisco, but I chose Emeryville because I like, I like here, I like this area, such a good place, and quiet, and, you know, like very good environment. So just want to make sure that you could want to do like any sign or big signature that shows, "Here is Emeryville." Right now, I don't see any sign that, "Here is Emeryville." All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Marketing, identity, signage.
Hello, my name is Karen from Jasmine Blossom Tyre, we're right on Hollis Street near 65th. We've been there about four years now. Some of the things that we're concerned with in minimum wages that we're going to talk about, so I don't want to go into it again, there's some other things though that are out of our control, such as safety. So there are some dark spots that are basically not very well lit, especially in that. So our customers sometimes are impacted when they leave, they end up coming back to tell us that their car was broken into only a block away or so, because there's certain areas where it's just super dark. And so you'll just see like a whole section where multiple cars, their glass is broken, and sometimes nothing's taken, but they just break in because they know those are their, what are called safe spots. So if there's something that can be done, and I know I just talked to the mayor about this, but that's not the only spot in Emeryville where there are these incidents that happen. I don't know, maybe more cameras, more lighting, and I personally don't even know how to go about requesting more lighting and making the case. I know the mayor mentioned that, you know, working with the police chief where they have more data about the concentrated crime areas could help, but that is something that impacts the business as well. We've probably lost customers because now they no longer want to eat there for dinner if they think that it's not a safe place to come to. Another thing I want to talk about, I live in Emeryville, so I, and I rent, so I know firsthand how much the rent has skyrocketed. None of our employees can even afford to live here. I think it's ridiculous that there is no affordable housing. I know that there's, there are some affordable units, but I don't think there's enough. I think there's so many developers coming in, building the luxury apartments, which is nice for the city, it looks great, but it doesn't make sense from a labor perspective if our employees have to come from very far away. So that was to echo what Mauro was saying. Another thing is, going back to parking, I know that, I missed your name.
Karissa.
Karissa, you mentioned parking from contractors, that's not the only thing I'm seeing. Now that we have more developers voting residential units, I feel that perhaps they're not voting enough parking spaces for their residents, because like I said, I live here, so even on the weekends, I see cars all over the street, and on weekdays, there's still parking anywhere, even in any of the garages, so I think it's becoming a larger and wider issue. That's also a turnoff when customers really want to go somewhere, they find that, or they know ahead of time that there's not going to be any parking.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mike Selmaier, I'm the commercial broker for Urban Residential at the Park and Powell Development. Heard a lot about the community, and we listen to that, so I'm not here to put anybody down about policies, politics, any of that. I just want to let you guys know that we have been very creative with the deals that we've gone after. We have a pharmacy that we landed, we have one medical, Dr. James Lu back here. So there's a lot of things that we've seen, and we're not making decisions on those things, so we're just trying to be creative with the tenants that we're bringing in. And so, you know, to say that the minimum wage hasn't affected that, you know, it is what it is, and so we've gone past that, we're okay with it. But, you know, we are pro-business ourselves, it's not about just getting the highest rent, it's more about what's good for the community and what our neighbors need, and, you know, so if anybody has any questions, please reach out to me. My website's mspsinc.com, or Main Street Property Services, thanks.
And so it's about to, well, it depends on whether you're a large or small business. For small businesses, it's about to aim next to $14.
Hi, I'm Erin Boucher, my husband and I own The Broken Rat. I'm also a member of the EDAC, and Chad might have mentioned, if you want to be too, everybody's term is expiring, so you can join the fun. I want to comment about two things. One, piggybacks on what Krista was talking about, and I believe Susan Shumay was talking about networking. And networking, it seems to me, is a natural function of a business organization, I mean, the Chamber used to do that. I believe that the city of Emeryville really needs a small business organization, one that is devoted to our interests, to informing small business owners, to helping small business owners make connections, increasing the connections between us and the community. Los City Emeryville tried to do that, but frankly, what we found out is, we need money, you know, and small business owners are very busy, you know, so they can't be running an organization on their own. An organization to thrive needs to have at least some kind of part-time director, and maybe then we could do insurances or something like that. We need someplace to function out of, and I'm just saying that if the city could help us, whether it's Los City Emeryville or something else, a true grassroots small business organization, that would really help us in many ways, and the community in many ways. I understand that the city used to give some sort of subsidy to the Chamber of Commerce. And you can't start an organization by asking people to put in a lot of money when they're already, you know, having difficulties staying in business. So that's another reason why I think it can't be purely on our own, we need some kind of help. The other thing is, I want to come back to the MWO, even though it has been covered. And I think originally, perhaps the city and planning board looked at this as a meeting where we could explore non-wage issues that through city policies you could ameliorate some of the owner's effects. And those are good, and I have seen very many good concrete examples of things that the city and other organizations can do to help us. But the truth is, for the mass majority of us, there is nothing you could do that will have more impact on us than the minimum wage ordinance. And the minimum wage ordinance isn't what it is. I mean, nobody thinks it's going to be repealed, nobody thinks that anybody's been on lower wages ever. I wouldn't be in favor of that myself. But there are still increases going on, and I want to, that are scheduled. And I want to, second, what some other people have said, I looked at the last two quarters of 2015, which was the first six months under the 1225 minimum wage, and compared it to the last two quarters of 2016, which was the first six months under 13. And I went from having a net operating profit to having a net operating loss. And although there were other factors, the most large by far was the increase in payroll. And that's not with increasing hours, in fact, I would be hiring more people for more hours if the wage weren't going up as it is. And my revenue was a little up, not a lot, but a little. So, you know, right now, I still had a net operating income that was positive for last year, but when I look at it going up again to 14, and then 15, and then 15 plus plus, I just have to wonder if that's sustainable. And so what I'm asking, the city council in particular, is I think, I believe that when this was passed, people fought based on the Berkeley study or whatever, you know, this isn't an impact business, this business will be okay, dah dah dah. Well, I think there's now, you must all be aware that there's a lot of stuff, a lot of studies, all studies don't agree on that, and there's more and more stuff in the press, various types of press, about difficulties businesses are running into because of the MWO. So I'm really urging you to go back and have a second study, and to keep an open mind about not whether you would reduce or do away with minimum wage, but maybe step off the escalator before you get to the top floor, and wait for general wages elsewhere around the state to catch up. So that's my request.
Thank you all. This has been great, and my name is Sal Ben Mars. Until recently, I was the owner and operator of actual cafe, not an Emeryville business, but very nearby. And had to close doors on that business because I couldn't sustain it with payroll at 45%. So, you know, I'm sympathetic to everybody in the room who was in a similar situation. The answer for me was to sell to somebody who could run the inner operation and keep the payroll lower. I didn't have the energy after having done my business for eight years to go back in and do that myself. But it's been in a position where I'm thinking forward, which I think we all have the opportunity to do. I've heard a lot of great things in this room about collaborating and networking and resourcing within the city, resourcing outside the city, thinking regionally. I think all those are important. The city of Oakland formed a small business task force, I'm sure any of you are aware. And we identified all of the pressures that we're talking about as happening also in Oakland along with some others. Increasing rents, increasing cost of living, increasing wages, decreasing liability for workers to live, especially in low-wage jobs in our city. All that's real. And what I have come to accept is that some of these forces are much bigger than me or we. And it's, it will be necessary for us collectively to come up with interesting solutions to those problems. Small business people, you look here in this room, you are my people, we're going to do this, we're going to do interesting stuff. So what I'm looking at is tremendous disruption, which is causing pain. It is causing pain, and that's real, it's causing pain, for real, it's causing pain. But it's also creating opportunity. And I think I would love to establish a strong dialogue between what's happening here in the city of Emeryville with regard to small business, and what's happening in Oakland. Ideally include other partners like Brooklyn and Richmond and San Fernando in the picture. The East Bay EDA folks listed some great service providers who are doing good work for business assistance that are available to you here. A lot of them are based in Oakland, they're friends of mine, I love them, they're going to do more, they're going to do better, because we're going to push them to do more and better. There are others though that aren't on that list, that I would love to make sure that get added to that list. There are, you know, job incubation and business incubation centers springing up all throughout Oakland, they're not well-connected to each other, they're not connected to anything happening in Emeryville. I think a lot of the work that we have here is in connecting all this stuff together, communicating better, sharing our resources. I'm coming into this problem in the spirit of wanting to share, and to the extent that everybody here can meet me there, I think we together can, can... can do big things. So let's continue the conversation.
My name is Ray Wong. I'm operating a ballroom called Alango Ballroom at Emeryville at Power Street. We've been running this ballroom for over twenty years now in Emeryville. And we see the developments. And we see that all the new businesses come in, small businesses, big businesses come in. And every time I heard everybody here saying it's a parking problem. Fortunately, we have about two hundred parking space for our ballroom to serve our customer. But we still have a parking problem. The problem is, number one, we have too much business. Of course, the parking is full. But this is nice to have, okay? And the worst thing is, we got a lot of break-in. People were targeted to that parking lot because a lot of our customers, they come from all different places. They carry their purse, they carry something. Some people forgot to left the purse in the car, got break-in. So we have break-in, I cannot say every weekend, but very frequent. So we ask the police to give us a running around every weekend. So they're doing their good job. Okay. But this is the parking problem. But I know that a lot of small businesses, they don't have many parking space outside. So I was thinking, I don't know, it's a while, now the Uber is very popular. You can call, and then nearby people can come and pick you up. Then you just pay and then go to a certain restaurant, a small business there. But why can't we have something like a bike? I'm not talking about free bike. I'm talking about bike. I can, I can open my app and then check out where can I get a free bike or some bicycle? So we can ride a bicycle to go to a small business cafe, and then put the bikes down there, and then we leave. And you don't have to, you don't have to do anything. Just put your phone, say, oh, I'm here. I'm finished using your bike. And that's it. And they will charge you a very minimal amount, maybe a dollar or something. Okay? In that case, all the small businesses, if you have a bike rack in front of your place, and people will ride that kind of one-dollar bike and come over to your place. And imagine now, we've got so many of those apartments here, especially all move in, all younger people. They don't mind riding a bike because it's green. It's a gas car. Imagine all the apartment cars are supposed to have their own parking space. Now they want to go out and have fun in the evening. If Emeryville moved by, they will go down and take a bike and go to a different restaurant, too. So it's a good cities for us, especially Emeryville. Such a beautiful city. I like to ride around with Shoreline. It's a beautiful weekend, weekday. We should promote. The city can help us to promote this green city using more bikes. Thank you.
Glad you mentioned that because we actually are doing that. We're working to roll out bike share region-wide, and the city of Emeryville is very supportive of that. It's put its own resources towards that as well.
Sorry to take the microphone again, but not everything's all bad. I have very impressed with the response of Chad in the last year and a half that I've known him, concerns the business community. And I also wish I wasn't very involved with the Emeryville Police Department because of the break-ins. They are very responsive to car break-ins, but there's not much they can do from what they told me. Basically, it's considered almost a low-level crime, even if they do catch people, you know, unless they have some serious priors, there's almost like catch and release. So I hope maybe you guys as City Council members can follow up with our state legislators to see things get a little bit more tougher on these break-ins because it's really heartbreaking to see these families who are coming in for a nice meal, and especially a lot of families from Berkeley and the community colleges around here, and hotel visitors. And they don't know any better. They leave their stuff out there, and boom, it's gone. I mean, these crugs are just quick. And so I hope that you guys can send that message out to the state legislators to increase penalties for these break-ins because, like I said, even when police catch them, there's not much they can do. So what good is it to have enforcement for these trap, for these car break-ins when they're going to let them go? Thank you.
Hi, I'll be thinking. And to build upon what was talked about here and by a couple other people, on the policing, I think that we need more police presence, and that means more personnel. It takes several years through training and going through the various steps to be a police person in Emeryville. We have a tremendous increase, we're all aware of, during the daytime. But our, and our police force is doing an admirable job, but they need more staffing. They need more budget.
I have one final comment. First of all, again, thank you everyone. I've operated in San Francisco for almost twenty years. So I guess everything is growing. I find this to be quite unusual, very welcoming, the fact that, you know, you've got mayors, City Councils sitting there listening to people from right across the bay. You basically are taking, you have absolutely no say whatsoever in how the city is conducted. So we're looking forward to growing in the city. And I want to thank you for taking the time to listen to us.
Welcome, Emeryville.
Hi there. My name is Drew Hefford. I charter boat at Emeryville Marina. I moved here from Santa Fe about a year ago because they closed the fuel dock there. It's no one particular person's problem, but it's just one of these issues where there's a certain amount of momentum, it's a certain way, the environment, but there's another side to it. We all operate on the water, all the charter boats, the sport fishing fleet, the water sports training facility, super pro environment. We organize beach cleanups, trash pickups, encourage environmental stewardship, no fuel dock, no businesses. So Santa Fe has no charter boats, no sport fishing fleet. We're here in Emeryville now. We appreciate you having us. And I just want to plant this seed real quickly. When it comes five or six years from now, when there is an issue with the fuel dock, you need to have a fuel dock in Emeryville because there are very few in the Bay Area. That's pretty much it. Thanks a lot.
Did we catch everybody? Is there any more out there? Yes?
Hi, I'm Dr. Magno, from Emeryville, Dan Oak Air, and at the public market. He called me out and talked about teething and that, so I was talking. But so I've been here since in the nineteen eighties, when Emeryville was considered a toxic dump place, right? And nobody knew where Emeryville was. So I moved to Emeryville because I was going to Berkeley. So I really enjoyed Emeryville when it was small. The rent control is for rent, I mean, it's just, there's no rent control there, right? So, I mean, I've been losing patience because they're saying their rent has gone up five hundred dollars a month, and they give them for a thousand dollars a month. And they've been living there for a while. So people are having to decide where are they going to live, you know, I mean, where are they going to live in the Bay Area? And then, of course, that's taken away from the businesses because instead of buying things or food or taking care of your teeth, right, they have to pay for their housing. So that's one big thing. I'm not sure if there's, and I think there's some kind of rent control issue where if the houses are not built, or if they're built after nineteen seventy-five, there's no rent control, right?
They report houses.
And also, so that's just my comment here. And then with the increased wages, I don't pay minimum wage, but just because all these other people are getting minimum wage, not my workers want to get paid double. So, but they don't do more. It's the same. It's like, they don't do more, right? They just want, because everybody else got an increase, right? And so I think there's another family unit condo that's being built here with, you know, a family unit plus the kids. I don't really see kids, and that's good for me, no. But, you know, the traffic is really bad. So, I mean, I'd hate to see, like, my kids when they were growing up around this area, because then they could get run over. I mean, people are just driving crazy here. It wasn't, it never used to be like that. And I come late to work and leave late because I don't want to deal with traffic. But if I came here at eight, I mean, you can't even get out or get in or leaving at five. Just to get out of the public market to the freeways, about ten, fifteen, twenty minutes. I mean, it's just like, I could walk faster than that. Also, I used to leave my car unlocked. But, you know, yeah, those things you forgot. I mean, it wasn't that long ago, but, you know, there was twice, because I stayed here, or we were, I don't know why, but we were working here from ten. And there is a camera right on my car. And the public market or the police, you know, they didn't do anything, even though it's like, go look at the, go look at the, you know, go look at the cameras. And they said, well, what they do is they, you know, break into things, cross the Oakland border, and then Emeryville can't do anything. So I don't know what they can do about that. But I got my things back because somebody saw my name with my social security number. It was my tax return. So I got my stuff back. But that was, that is not a good situation to be in. And so...
Good afternoon. My name is George Martin. I'm the park owner of the Georgia Market Company, third generation. We've been in Emeryville since nineteen forty. The family have seen Emeryville grow and change. And I would like to say, we are in Emeryville. We're still in Emeryville. Folks, Emeryville has good size and it has some issues. But it's not Berkeley, and it's not Richmond, and we'd be happy for that. But I will say that through the years of our development and growth, Emeryville has been really good to work with in all aspects. We often have struggles, but in the end, it works out. And I can't say enough about Emeryville and working in Emeryville. I just want to give a little positive about it.
Great. Anything else out there? Anyone else want to?
Hello. My name is John Amek, and I'm running a small manufacturing company called The Suspender Factory. And I just want to tell you a bit about my background. I grew up in a very prosperous, small country in Europe called Czechoslovakia, which ultimately got bankrupted by socialism, just like the rest of the social Europe, Soviet Union, and Cuba. Okay, so America was my ideal. I was delighted to come here. I had twenty bucks in my pocket when I landed in New York City, and I had a great time. American people are very welcoming people. They are not amused. They support it. And I basically served the US Army in Vietnam Iraq, and I never collected one penny of unemployment, ever. I started a business in my garage, making suspenders. And then basically, when the mortgage mini era came, we made a ton of money. So basically, we were hiring more people, hiring more people. Emeryville ultimately was very welcoming to businesses. I guess was, under the mayor of Ken Bukowski and others, was delighted to move to Emeryville. Plenty of parking, welcoming by city officials. However, things have changed. Before the discussion started about the minimum wage, our company had sixty-four employees. Today, we have forty-two employees, and we continue laying people off. Now, you would think that the City Council member cared about holding small businesses in the city. I need to tell you this, that I don't want to be personal, meaning naming anybody, but I was told, we don't care about your business that pays poverty wages, and we'll get some other businesses moving in. So we know where we are. Okay, basically, I'm not getting a paycheck with my wife. When the minimum wage went up, basically, it wiped out all of our savings and all of our profit. And it also destroyed the compensation structure. Because the people who used to make sixteen dollars, eighteen dollars, twenty dollars, walked out. They said the lowest performers got forty percent increase. How about us? So I'm seventy-one years old. I don't plan to move anyplace. I'm finished and done. Thank you very much.
About ten minutes. Is there anyone else, anything to say? Oh, yeah. Well, let me, I haven't heard.
My name is Asia. I'm one of the co-owners at Ersmidy in Emeryville. So we're a little bit of a different small business because we're cooperative. Everybody that works there is a part owner. So with fifteen owners and it constantly changes, it's a little bit different. But we kind of agree with all of these things, everything on there. So I don't want to repeat a lot of the things that's already been said. Something that we could use some help with is promotions and marketing. Having new owners all the time, nobody has a degree in promotions or marketing. We're makers, you know. We get there, we bake pizzas and muffins. And little things that we try and think of get kind of kicked down by the city, or like putting an A-frame out in the median. We can't do that. But if you go like four blocks down, it's all of a sudden Oakland, there's tons of them. And there's people that come to our business and they're saying, hey, this is great. It's fresh bread in the morning. How long have you guys been here? And you're like, fourteen years. And, you know, a lot of people have no idea where they are. We're pretty invisible, even though we're right there on San Pablo Avenue. It'd be nice to get things like the bike service or a parklet, which is apparently extremely hard to do when you are on San Pablo Avenue. So just things that we would like to kind of make our business a little bit more inviting and welcoming and visible. Help with that, and would be much appreciated. Thank you.
One of the jewels of the city, as you mentioned, is the Emeryville Go-Round. That is one of the great things that the city has. I've traveled many cities. I haven't seen anybody offering the type of service like that. I use it a lot. You need to promote it more. A lot of the new employees that come on board with us, we give them the schedule of the Go-Round. They're, oh, we never knew they had anything like this here. So that would be something that I should try to promote the city more and businesses, you know, for the visitors, the Emeryville Go-Round. That is one of the jewels of the city. Hope you really can promote that some more.
All right. Anyone else?
Just a last word. I think if I was asked, you know, by the City Council member, what would they, what should they do, you know, for our business to prevent layoffs and going out of the city? I said, freeze the minimum wage. You know, if you're concerned about high rents, do a rent control. By the way, if we had a higher minimum wage than Manhattan, New York City, we're used to, we get, where the average apartment, one-bedroom apartment averaged fifty, a hundred dollars. And we have a higher minimum wage here in Emeryville. So what I was asking, if the city could basically freeze the minimum wage or delay the increases in the minimum wage for people that have less than fifty-five employees. And I haven't heard back. So I don't know what the situation may be. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, I just want to play a little devil's advocate here. I understand the problems, we've all experienced them, whether it's, you know, you have minimum wage issues at your place of work, whether your employees can't afford to live here, but you have to look at the big picture. In order to buy a piece of property here, and pay the kind of taxes you have to pay, you can't then go after the people and say, "You can't, you can't raise your rents past a certain point." You have to then cap the price of housing, you have to cap the price of taxes, you know, it all kind of works together. You can't just take one segment of something and try to hold it down, because that's kind of artificial in a free market. So, you have to figure out how to make the free market work better. Um, I think there's a lot of people that are very small-minded when it comes to these issues, and so I'd like us all to think sort of larger, and how it impacts everybody. I mean, if a developer comes in, I'm not a developer, but, you know, in order for me to do a project, it has to be profitable to me. I have to be able to afford to come in, take the risk, and then gain the benefit ultimately, right? Keep my apartments, uh, you know, fully occupied, you know, all of those things. So, while I feel for someone who's on minimum wage, that can't afford to live in an apartment that's two thousand dollars, you know, or more, you know, you have to look at all sides of it. That's the only thing I have to say, because I live in Berkeley, and it's very strange there, the way they run things, and I've lived there for decades.
Can we get Berkeley Strange on the board? No, I'm kidding. Anyone else? Have we captured, uh, I was gonna ask if y'all will take a look at the board, and I want to make sure if we've captured what we're hearing.
I just wanted to say that I wanted to make sure that we all stay connected, I know networking was on there, but, um, we make a point to, like, all of us owners make a point to go out and frequent as many Emeryville businesses as possible, but a lot of them are kind of hidden, and they're hard to find, and it'd be good to know, like, I don't know, somehow have some kind of, uh, I don't know, email, or some kind of blast that we know, like, there's new businesses here, come frequent them, or some way that we could all be connected. Um, I know that I kind of depend on Evil Eye to get all of my news, and, um, that's just me being on social media all the time, but it'd be better, you know, the city has, you guys are kind of in the know a little bit more, so it'd be good if you guys can keep us all updated, and maybe have, I don't know, festivals or something where we can all get out and say, "Hey, look at our little businesses," and we're all here together, we're all working together within Emeryville.
Addition to our networking events would be some sort of communication tool between the city and business community. Thought I saw another hand. Is that it? Did we capture everything? Did, you know, for the most part, is, does the wall show? With the checkmarks indicating multiple comments, does the wall show, capture what the discussion was? Is there anything else? Okay, that. Vice Mayor Bubbs?
Thank you, uh, thank you everyone for coming, and for sharing our ideas, and for staff taking all these ideas down. Uh, I asked the mayor to just let me respond briefly to a few of the questions that were raised. Um, we, we had a chance to hear from you, I just wanted to issue a little bit of input back. Uh, the, the city council, um, did sign letters of support both for a single-payer health system, which is a state bill running right now, and in support of a bill for rent control. To the question about rent control, it's true that Emeryville may not actually legally rent control most of the housing in the city, by over ninety percent of it, due to a state law that's currently in place that prohibits that. Uh, the city council has taken action both on single payer, single payer health and rent control recently. Um, we are bringing Bike Share to Emeryville, and there will be ten Bike Share stations, hopefully by the end of this year, or early next year, I believe, and, uh, there is an app for that, I can't believe I just said it, there's an app for that. And, um, so there will be, uh, they are working with city staff to spot those around the city, and then in the next two to three years, we're gonna add ten to fifteen more, so there'll be about, network about twenty-five, at the most, I think, Bike Share facilities in the city of Emeryville, which will be connected to the rest of those in the Bay Area. Three in July is what Councilmember Martinez is telling me. Um, as to break-ins and auto burglaries, this was studied specifically at the Public Safety Committee meeting last week. The, uh, police department, all crime categories in the city of Emeryville are down this past year, with the exception of auto burglaries, which are up immensely. And this is a very difficult trend, it's not limited to Emeryville, it is a Bay Area problem right now, uh, but our police department is studying this issue, um, they are, I have gone out with them on ride-alongs to look at how, uh, this, this crime is taking place. Uh, they're literally using, um, spark plugs, ceramic pieces of spark plugs, and they can literally throw them at the window, and it makes almost no noise, and it completely cracks the window and shatters it. Uh, they can just walk through a parking lot and just toss them at the windows, and it just breaks the windows. It's fascinating to see how it works, not that I recommend you do it. But something else for you to share with your customers that I didn't know until last week, is a lot of people leave stuff in their trunk, or they pull that cover over the back of their, their hatchback, and if you leave an iPad, a computer, or a phone in the back of your car, even if it's on sleep mode or silent mode, um, what they're doing is, they walk along with a Wi-Fi detector to detect your own device's signal, and when they get a signal on the back of a car, that's how they're selecting a lot of these cars. So, you can inform your own customers by letting them know to turn something completely off, or to bring it in if it's electric to a photonic device. Um, Councilmember Martinez is gonna talk about choice aggregate in a second, and the only other two items I wanted to briefly mention on the affordable housing, the city council is considering approval of all, all a family affordable housing building tonight, which would be on San Pablo. Um, we just approved an RFP for an all affordable senior housing site on San Pablo, we have given staff instruction for a permanent supportive housing site on San Pablo, and a year and a half ago, our development, uh, guidelines now require that developers who wish to build bigger or denser in the city, must build more affordable units inside these market-rate projects. So, the city is actually taking a lot of very proactive steps on affordable housing. It takes, um, some time between when things are approved and come online, obviously, but we are working on that. And, uh, the parking issue, the city, um, has approved a study to go out to study the needs of parking citywide, that will take place over the course of the year, and the hope is that by the end of the year, early next year, we will be doing some systemic review of parking. So, I just wanted to address those brief items that I heard people mention, but really appreciate your input and feedback today, and, Councilmember Martinez, you have one.
I've got one, thank you, Vice Mayor. Um, I just wanted to touch on East Bay Community Energy, so we do have community choice aggregation, um, that will be starting, launching in, uh, spring of twenty eighteen, and for those of you who don't know what that is, that will be an alternative to PG&E, uh, so that, you know, we as ratepayers will be able to, to make, put a focus on purchasing renewable energy, and, um, to support local business development, because that's actually, um, a part of East Bay Community Energy's, um, plan, is to support local business development. And so, um, it's Joint Powers Authority, that is the majority of the cities in Alameda County, as well as the, um, county of Alameda, and we were going full speed ahead, I've got a board meeting, um, tomorrow night, and, uh, it's going to be an opt-out program. So, we're gonna start with commercial accounts, so you'll, you'll all start seeing, um, mailers, and, you know, our goal, one of our number-one goals is to have, um, competitive rates with PG&E, so you're gonna be able to decide for yourselves, um, whether or not going green makes sense for you, but it is our goal to make it make fiscal sense for you, so we're, we're gonna want to be competitive with PG&E, just to survive. So, um, we hope to bring that to you in, uh, spring of twenty eighteen.
We do have plans for having parking controls in our city, and parking enforcement that's real, and we're, we're working on it, we are determined to do something about it, and I think it will benefit everyone when we have these parking controls better situated in our city. I think it'll be better for a small business, better for residents, we'll get much better utilization, and I just, uh, I've heard so many great ideas today, and sometimes, in the world of design, they have things called design charrettes. That's where people hear a problem, and they start to think of solutions, usually starting with the insane solution, but then, all of a sudden, when many people come up with different ideas, there are new ideas that are actually practical, that get made as a result of thinking creatively about these problems. So, I think that our council needs to interact with you on the wackiest of ideas, that will whittle it down to something that we can really do to, uh, improve our business climate and our residential experience with small businesses in our city. So, I'm, I'm confident that we are all ears to your ideas going forward. And thank you again for coming, and I, I've learned a lot today, and I, I think all of us, uh, on the, to the council and the planning commission, heard a lot of new ideas, so thank you again.
I would also like to say I really appreciate everybody coming and hearing the ideas, and I would like to ask specifically about the follow-up. Will the resources in the PowerPoint we posted on the city website, for people who weren't here and didn't have access to the information, what are the next steps?
Yes, so we will post this on the website, the powerpoint. The information, I'm glad, glad you asked this question, so all of the information will be distilled to a document that we'll bring back to the city council in the future, for prioritization and assignment. And this isn't the end of the conversation, I don't, I don't mean to imply this is it, I mean, as you drive away and you're working and you think of something, send me an email, my cards are at, at the desk, if you don't have one already, uh, or send to me an email with your thoughts, we'll include all of that in the tour, and, uh, we'll bring it back to you.